Like to call the February twenty six, twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting to order at seven twelve P M. Let's rise ready like we just. Doctor Willitt, do we have any acknowledgements tonight?
We do not have any.
Do we have any additions to the agenda? And let's move on to the approval of minutes. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the February fifth, twenty twenty five um minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay, Brian?
Bye.
Bill?
Bye.
Dana?
Bye.
Rini?
Stain.
Jayden?
Aye.
An aye and an aye, so that passes. I will now entertain a motion for the February twelfth, twenty twenty five um approval of minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? Brian?
Bye.
Bill?
Bye.
Dan?
Bye.
Rini?
Aye.
Jayden?
Aye.
Is this too many? No, no. I'm an I, sorry. Thought I knew and then I questioned it, so I'm an I, so that passes as well. Okay, um, don't think we have anyone online? Oh, we do. Um, so I'd like to open up public participation. The members of the Town Board of Education, welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the Board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. Will, you ready with that timer?
I am.
Okay, do we have any? We do not have anyone in the room tonight. Um, do we have anyone online uh who would like to participate? Please raise your hand. One once. One twice. Okay, I think we can close that out. Let's move on to correspondence, Bill.
We had thirteen budget emails come in, just different topics on the budget.
Great. Uh, Lisa, I see that Dan has joined. Thank you. Hi, Dan. Um, okay. Now, let's move on to points of information. Would any member of the Board?
Katie, Katie Olson. I'll, Katie, I'll take also join you.
Okay. Thank you. Would any members of the Board um like to say anything at this time? Hey, we're rolling right along. Student representative's report.
All right, so first off, NHS is having their annual blood drive. It's Monday, March third, from eight A M. to one P M. To sign up, you have to be at least sixteen years old and you have a chance of getting a ten dollar Amazon gift card.
And then Deca States is on Monday, March third. It is a twelve-hour day. It is six to six. So very, very long day, but we're really excited. We have a lot of strong competitors and I hope to be at the next meeting with some very good ones.
Also, the first prom committee meeting was today at two P M. It was for juniors only and in room two twenty and they picked the theme menu decorations, everything having to do with prom.
And tomorrow on Friday, the innovation is taking, the Innovation Challenge is taking place at the University of Hartford, uh where some talent students are competing. They learn how to create a lean business plan, how to pitch ideas, and they can win money and prizes from it. That is also an all-day event, which I will be at, so.
Good luck.
Thank you, but uh that is it. Very brief week, uh so if there are any questions, comments or concerns?
Where is the Deca cha- uh State Challenger?
That is at the Aqua Turf. So, yeah, it's fancy. Uh, they changed the, they changed the layout of this year. We don't know if it's gonna be better, we don't know if it's gonna be worse, but they changed it, so can't be that bad.
Exciting.
Very exciting, but um, yeah, it's a really great venue, it's a really fun day, so I'm excited.
Get back.
Thank you.
Luck next Tuesday.
I'm waiting for Jayden.
Sometimes bumping the ladies.
I'm here, Jayden.
No, I just, I thought I did, oops, sorry. Um, no, I just said, good luck next Tuesday, it's exciting. And let me know what that new layout is. It's been the same, same thing for however many years, so good luck, have fun, enjoy it. Hopefully, there's better food than there has been in years past, so have fun.
I think it's gonna stay the same as it has been for years, but cheers to wishful thinking.
Cheers, good luck.
Thank you, as always. Um, what it looks like? Oh, no, shoot that, okay. So, let's move on to committee and liaison reports. You guys might need to help me with all of these, but we can start. Brian, I know you've had communications today.
Yeah, we'll uh provide an update. We might be doing some uh community outreach, uh well, get a little more data and I'll make a update the next weekend.
Great. Bill?
We met today with curriculum and uh we met with uh Adam. Yeah, and Jen Webster about the uh one-to-one technology, very informative, about how it's used at all the levels, so it was very good meeting.
Great, Dana, did you have a policy meeting?
Yep, this morning, and we're gonna be counting him, so we'll be talking about it tonight.
Perfect. Um, Dan, F S D?
Yeah, thank you. We met um to February nineteenth, I wanna say it was um monthly financial report, actually looks good. Last year around this time, the budget um for the school system was in a freeze for several months by, at this point in the school year. Um, it's looking relatively healthy at this point. We all understand that it can change at the drop of a hat, but we're at about one, one point five to one point five percent of the budget remaining. Got about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in there, um so knocking on wood over here, uh but we're looking decent going into, towards the end of the year. Um, I would say uh other things coming up at this point, we just had a solar uh presentation um on kind of what it would look like for opening up discussions again. Uh, I forgot the individual's name, but it should be in our minutes. Um, but we had him in to consider it, we're gonna raise it up to the board on that conversation. Um, talked quickly about the U S F Fund as well, cause it was a longer solar presentation, but other than that, we're gonna have a deep dive as well into e-chip and insurance. Um, working with Jen right now and getting that scheduled, but it looks like I wanna say it's, could be early March to, early to mid-March, but it's coming up, it'll be a special meeting, so. To be co- to be coming, I'm sure.
And then for negotiations, we are still in um negotiations with um secretaries. We had our first meeting and our second meeting is upcoming.
I just uh follow up, but Dan, what facility are you uh looking with the solar?
Yeah. Yeah, not at all. It's um, there's considerations for each school, um but that being said, um it's not a one-size-fits-all package. We can pick and choose kind of what you want, what works, um based on different models on different schools, um different layouts, but all of that will be presented to the board, uh cause we didn't wanna make any decisions clearly and uh, but happy to field questions next time when, when it gets up there to the board level.
Thanks.
Yep.
Um, Leon, uh next on the agenda is the Chairperson's report. You do not have one of those tonight. Item K is the Superintendent's report. You have anything?
I have one for certain time, but you have new business and um.
So would you like to move right along to new business?
Lovely.
Okay.
Alright, so new business, um every once in a while, what I will do is um give you as the board an update on the field trips, just to, so you can have a sense of the trips the kids are going on and the kinds of things that are going on in the school system for that. So this link is available to everyone in the public too, if you're able to pull up the um agenda. These are all the field trips that are in play right now. The Boston Real Trip, the Foster Family Farm Field Trip. Um, there's a play for depicting the Charter Oak Legend. Uh, there's a Birch Grove Field Trip that's focused on oceanography. Uh, What Makes Community Field Trip, Benton Museum, uh Wadsworth up in A M. The Connecticut People in Places Tour. Uh Yukon C T P A AIM Program, it's, it's for students that are very interested in, in accounting. Um, the Buels Apple Orchard Trip, Yukon Opportunity Fund School Business Trip. Kids go, young adults go there and get a sense of what the Yukon School of Business has to offer and things like that. Uh, there's an interview day, which is sort of internal. Uh, Middle School Eastern Regions, which is music. Collin Green Day, uh, these, some of these are coming up, but this is just everything that has been submitted to me thus far for this year. Um, Collin Green Day, the kids get into outfits from the early eighteen hundreds and they're all over the green and it's great. Many of you know it. Uh, that's kind of a field trip that's sort of very local, cause it's right out there in the green and in our local um museums and so on. Uh, the Kuman Co- Conference, which uh students participate and compete in a model United Nations Conference. There's ski and snowboarding trips, Oceanog- uh Oceanology Trips, Salt Marsh Trip, Randall Park Erosion. Um, there's Nastor's Adventure Park Trip that occurred, which was part of a team building for the seventh grade at one point. Um, some of these are labeled retroactive, came in before the beginning of the school year, uh so they were before, we were doing all the tracking, so that's why they say retroactive. Old Sturbridge Village, um the CAS Leadership Conference. Well, T H S Music Holiday Tour, the Junior Achievement Innovation Challenge, Deca State Competition, Puerto Rico Science and Culture Trip, this is actually canceled, there wasn't enough uh interest in it right at this time. The Washington Detroit, D C Trip Cultural Immersion through Spain and Madrid, which is an international trip. Two Colors, which is up at Yukon, uh in a Sweetheart Dance, which is a unified basketball team sort of event. Um, that we take a trip to, a sit-down lunch, T T A students. There are talent transition academy students go out and go to lunch as a life skill. Club enrichment at Yukon Botany Club, um connects up with the Yukon Botany Program and then do some great stuff. And then the Eastern Region um School Music Festival. And that is another music festival that our kids participated in. So this is everything really up to now, just to give you sort of a complete flyover as quickly as I could. The narratives might be missing a period or two, but I was pulling them all, you know, on the computer.
And everything isn't necessarily away, like that first room one isn't in house.
Sometimes we have field trips that are just sort of.
Leaving the building, yeah.
Then uh is there, one was that uh reptile place up like Enfield or something around that? I saw my son went to that last year, third grade or fourth, uh.
You haven't seen the reptile?
Third grade, but what's the name of that place?
They have Riverside.
Yes, Riverside, yeah.
Riverside, they often come here too.
Oh, alright, oh, maybe that was, maybe they came here.
Times they'll come.
Yeah, yeah.
And they bring the uh hissing African cockroach.
Yeah, yeah.
One year I had him come.
I don't recall.
We did a program at Barnes Noble and I, and I had him come and Barnes Noble flipped out. The huge cockroach came out, cause there's health codes for them. So it's hilarious, I'm sorry, but, but anyway, yes, he's great and they'll come up.
Yeah, I just started the White House tours back up, I think it was yesterday or the day before.
Yeah.
People going to D C, get on the list.
Excellent, that's available to everybody there online if they wanted to.
Any other questions or comments on field trips? Okay, thank you, Doctor Willitt. Any old business? Danny, that brings us to Board Action, which is the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
So uh we had kind of went through this policy, uh took a good look at it. And um this calendar that we have seen is the one that's back up for Board consideration and approval. Uh, the calendar, well, I've already kind of given it to one down, I'll, I'll pause.
I think the big thing that we talked about in policy is, policy was, like if we started before Labor Day, usually it's two to three days before Labor Day, then go to Labor Day, then start again. Right now, because of professional development, onboarding and all those different things, it was only the Friday before Labor Days when we'd start. And then have the weekend and then start again, so.
So the earliest we could start?
Is it twenty-ninth?
The, is the Friday before.
That would be the earliest.
Is that because of the teacher's contract starting date?
Yes.
The twenty-fourth, right?
They cannot start before the twenty-fourth and there has to be four days of uh of.
Professional development and such.
So what?
And some of it is uh P D and then there's a day for prep and then there's a day.
So it's two matches, the first potential day that we could.
And then the meet and greets have to occur before the, you know, there's a whole alignment, but those four days um have to happen there. So that's why the earliest you can start would be the twenty-ninth and the contract says you cannot start before the twenty-fourth.
Alright, so let's do a quick swing around and let everybody um have comments or questions before, cause it is in action before we move on, so.
We can swing with Brian.
Wanna start, yeah.
We'll swing that.
Brian, would you like to start?
Bill, you wanna get start?
Sure, um, well, what did Policy Committee say?
Okay, so we'll swing back to you. So originally, so prior, we talked a lot about having multiple days before Labor Day to start, like having the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then Labor Day off and then come back the Tuesday, right? So the kids have a chance to get acclimated, the teachers have a chance to get acclimated. The big caveat was the twenty-fourth and the fact that they had P D onboarding and different things, so our day to start school would be the twenty-ninth, so it would be all summer, starting Friday, take the weekend and then Tuesday. So we thought that we would submit to start Tuesday was what the consensus was for policy, because having one day to start, when people are talking about doing, you know, vacations, Alas Hurrah, kind of those kind of things for families and so on and so forth, it was kind of silly to have a Friday as a school day, was the consensus, not necessarily the decision-maker, but we thought about starting school, was it the second?
Just the Tuesday.
Then that's how this is gonna figure.
Alright, so with that, I have a question.
Yep.
If we started on the twenty-nine, would that just flex the last day of school one day sooner? So it's not like we're getting any more or less of school days, we're not getting any more
Correct.
days in front of teachers' instruction by starting on the twenty-ninth. It would still be the same amount of school days.
That's also.
Not a fraction.
That's contractual, I'm gonna make that.
Okay.
What we were thinking, we were talking about policy, it would be a big deal if it was the three days, like the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, like that's a big chunk going into June, right? Like the, like I remember, we've had a few years that went into the twentieth, so that was the conversation. But since we don't have that flexibility to do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, in those three days, what does that one day do? That was the conversation though.
That's my only question.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Brian, wanna go back to you or you want?
Sure, sure, alright, uh, I'll, I'll go, I'll see.
I don't have any hands yet, so.
Alright, so we've read um onboarding days. These, so you have to have these four in-service days. Can these in-service days not start on the twenty-first at this onboarding day?
They can't, cause the contract doesn't allow them to start with fourth twenty. The onboarding days are.
Why couldn't we have started the, uh, the twenty-fifth? Oh, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, you just get, you have to provide them four teacher and services to start?
Yep, it's all part of contracts and each day there's designated uh ways that we have to use that time. And you have to have during the prep days before meet and greets can happen, so everything has to be in a certain line.
There's, there's not just the professional development, but there's also, you know, new teachers coming in, teachers that have changed rooms, teachers that have changed grade schools. They need time to go in, set up their classrooms, all of that is encompassed during all the time too.
Oh, no, I, I, I understand, I'm, I'm always the teacher, I'm actually doing it every year. I completely understand, like, uh, it's not about that, I was just more or less the days on the calendar and that, that's all, wasn't about the actual work that they needed to be done. Um, the other thing that I, that I would, would, would like in this, i- if, for an adjustment, um, is the twenties, the day before Thanksgiving, I, I, I'd just like that to be a, an early release day and not a complete day off. And in my realm of things, and then the um, I know there was discussion regarding a lot of these um uh professional development days, not from the, the board, just people that have just spoken to me in general, about that there seems to be just so many of these early release days and it does put a, a burden on some people, I know there's, you know, you're giving people enough with advanced notice, I understand that, but it's still a, a burden on people, whether, whether it's six months away or six years away, if you do work full-time, it does create a burden, so I don't know what we do alleviate that, but I, I'd like to see a little bit less of those and maybe uh more of a full day, combine like three of these into a full day, maybe it is easier, so you only need to be with one person for one day versus three days. I don't know what other people feel about that, but I, I, that's what I would.
And just.
Like to see some altering in that regard.
This is a reminder that the full days are contractually negotiated, so we can't uh do a full day in those hard days that we don't already have.
We would have, so we would have to take that into consideration when negotiating the next contract.
You have to negotiate more in-service days.
At this time. We can.
You're gonna, you'd have to contractually have more in-service days, so we can eliminate, you know, a lot of these half-days.
Yeah, the full days are contractually um negotiated.
Yeah, I guess.
Both in-service days are contractually negotiated, the half-days, we can put wherever we want without it in the contract. Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, that's all I'll say for this time.
Okay. Um, Dan, you have anything?
No, it, it sounded like um uh all of these days are either, or the majority at least are contractually obligated. We talked about, like, everything Dana said, we talked about this morning. Uh, I agree that there, it might be a different conversation if it were uh like a half a week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday prior to, um, but just having them come in for the Friday, it just didn't really make a ton of sense, in my opinion. I, I don't wanna do anything that's gonna impact um attendance or anything along those lines, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Uh, Jayden, you're next on the list, do you have anything?
No adjustments, my apologies to the Policy Committee this morning. Um, I completely agree, you know, it doesn't make much sense for, I think, all parties involved, teachers, uh, staff of all kinds, students, families, parents, et cetera, um, to sort of throw that much of a loop into things. And so, um, I am pro starting, I think, does that say the second there? Um, or is, uh, uh, we would start the second, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I, I fully support it. Um, I, I thought there was a discussion last meeting or, or a couple of meetings ago about some of the frustration in the room with early release days, and so now I'm hearing, you know, get rid of a day off and replace it with an early release day, and so I'm not, I wanna get a better understanding of where do we stand on early release days as a group. Uh, that's number two. Number three, um, in terms of professional development, um, you know, I, I, I told a story a, a couple of weeks ago and I won't get into it right now, but over the last few weeks, I've really got, gotten a much better understanding, again disappointed that I didn't have the understanding beforehand um of how important those days are. And so I will not be voting uh for anything that uh adjusts those professional development days unless it means they get more, frankly. And so, um, so that's, that's sort of where I'm at right now, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the schedule as is, um, I'd be happy to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
So Jayden, just to make sure I understand, where you said, um, you wanted to understand where we were, was that a question that you were posing or were you more just saying you were interested in hearing the comments that we discussed it?
I suppose so, more of a curiosity question, not really a, you know, I'm calling anybody out type of question, it's more so, you know, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, and please do, but I, I, I feel like a few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, we had discussed um, um, you know, some of these days before holidays and, you know, should they be, you know, early release or full days? And now we're discussing, should it be no-day school or early release day? And so, you know, I, I, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of where folks stand, you know, cause I feel like it's changed since, since we last discussed this, which is okay, I, that's, I'm, opinions change and things change like that. Um, you know, I just, I wanna know before I'm, you know, submitting a vote as to, you know, specifically Brian had mentioned, I think the day before Thanksgiving, um, uh, which I'm not uh seeing off the top of my head. It's somewhere down, I think that's the twenty-sixth. Um, the twenty-sixth, instead of being an off day, that would go to an early release day, when again, a couple of meetings ago, we had discussed or, or early release days being useless, kids don't get things done, all these things, all these things, and it, so I guess it isn't quite.
That wasn't my view at all.
That was my view.
Gotcha, okay, well, in that case.
That was not my view at all, uh, for clarity.
Fair enough, fair enough, so in that case, like, the question's irrelevant. Um, but again, I just, I, you know, I wanna make sure we're being consistent in terms of what we're communicating to families, so that they have an understanding of what to expect, even if this is not the schedule that we pass, you know, consistency with families and whatnot, as you all are aware, I'm the only one here that, you know, doesn't have children in the schools and, you know, whatnot, but um, you know, even though I'd consider I've had like a thousand of them in there, but um, that's besides the point, so, yeah, I, I approve the schedule as is, like, Brian just clarified that for me, so did Bill, so um, all of that sort of makes sense and I am good to go, thank you.
Uh, uh, before we move on, can I say one more thing or?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, the uh January second, um, is there a particular reason why we have this day off and not a regular working school day? Cause usually the holiday is the first and the second, we usually go back to school in January. Um, cause if you do that, if you put that back as a working day and you put Thanksgiving.
I think it's the contract, you get the day after the New Year Day or something like that.
Usually you get New Year's Day.
Yeah, New Year's Day is one, and then I think it's just the way they rounded out, um, you know, just the week, it's the way it's been done in sort of in the past that people liked, so that was kind of how it was lined up here.
I hear what you're saying, Brian, cause yeah, you usually go back the second. I think that it lies on a Friday, right?
Yeah.
So I'd be worried about attendance, that was what, so I hear you, cause I don't disagree with you, cause the holiday is the first. So it looks to me like it makes it a full week, right?
When it falls on the, when it falls near the Friday, it's usually been.
So it makes it the full week, but I also, the same thing that we were talking about in policy this morning, was starting on the Friday, like even if we put it on the twenty-whatever for Friday, like, what's the attendance gonna look like? So even if we put back the second, which I'm in favor of, because I think putting back the day, cause it's not the holiday, what would your attendance look like when you have the twenty-fourth through the first off and then you have that still that weekend and start back the fifth? I would question, hate to say it, that. And that was the big conversation we had this morning in policy was attendance.
It's my, my only, my reason, oh, I'm, I'm thinking here, because if you go back to this projected last day being the sixteenth of June, if you have them go to school on the um, the day before Thanksgiving and on the second, you end up technically can get out on Friday, the twelfth of June.
It's gonna be snow days.
Yeah. Mid that week.
Typically done is you typically have eight days in this particular break. So like last year, you had eight days, usually it has eight days, that's probably why.
Four, five.
No, that was outside. I definitely did it out here.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
So I'm looking at.
Nine days.
So I'm looking at last year's, or this current year's calendar right now, and that is the juggle, so this year, we have the twenty-third off through the first, whereas here, it's the twenty-fourth through the second, so it's the same amount of days, it's just pushed off one day, because in this year's calendar, that the first was on a Wednesday, but in next year's calendar, the first is on a Thursday. So it looks like they just swapped it again, so that attendance would be there, but it stayed an eight-day holiday.
You have the same eight days, which is. You have the same eight days, which is.
That helps.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I I understand. I I don't agree with them, but I understand.
Well, in the same respect, I question February week. Look, I just say it that way, like. With February break, you have the holiday, then you have the day off, and then you have PD. Like what, you know, so I I understand that way. Like, so you think about saving a day. Then you get your February. It's just a lot.
Yeah, the seventeenth, yeah, I I ask that day, let them go back to school on the se- I I never knew why we even had this blow, or it was two weeks ago.
Cuz it's, it used to be a full break, full week break, and we reduced it down to.
And it's like April, move the April vacation up to the. The we- the week of a Good Friday, so you only, so you don't have to lose as many days. You can save another day there. So just things you can move around. If we feel like, if we wanna. Move states around. And if you don't, then that's up to you all.
Let me ask you the question. Is the intent of moving things around to have the last day of school sooner?
Yeah, I believe so. I'd rather be out in in June, uh and not be going to the end of June. Plus, I I mean. Also, when we have these long breaks, kids don't do so well, like to have all of these breaks, like my my kids really. Struggle to get back in the routine and all of a sudden, boom, we got early release. Oh, we're off three days in February. Yep. We're just off for ten days, like five weeks before for for Christmas. Like it just, I I just feels like there's always a break, always a break, always a break. And then you go into, here you have, you know, so you go in February, then you have March, and you have. Four early release days, then you go to April and you have Good Friday off, then you have a weekend, one full week, then boom, you have another. Six, five days plus both weekend ends and nine days. And then you come back for one week and then you have another early, it's like, there's always like. Something going on and I get I get spoken to by many different people in the community about, there never seems to be a consistency. Of kids going for two, three, four, five weeks in a row without some sort of, I know there's holidays, but I'm just saying. To an early release and a vacation or a PD day in the middle of wherever. It just from people that have spoken to me personally, they really feel to struggle to get kids in a rhythm and then boom, something's happening to where they're having this break. But that's where where what I'm hearing from people. So it's not just the people in the room or the presentation of the calendar, it's just it it's concerns that I hear, so.
Um, one thing about the February, if you're gonna do that, then to that is a in-service day on the eighteenth, it's a whole day in service.
So I guess my question.
So that could drop back to the seventeenth and still be back sooner, but we we still, you probably wouldn't wanna come back. You know, like the out.
Switching.
You one day and then, you know, come back one day and then go out and come back. You probably want us to move the inserts.
Well, I think the point that Brian and I were talking about is moving whatever to the the PD, the Tuesday, and start school the Wednesday.
Yes, so make the seventeenth a professional development day and back to school on the eighteenth.
Correct. Hey, listen, I'm all for getting out in May. So I hear.
What can we take out to get out in May?
But.
You guys are okay with getting out in May, right?
I'd like to hear what you guys have to say about the early, sorry, I'm gonna take a little.
Let's keep going around. Okay.
I'm done. I'm 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 done. Thank you for hearing my thoughts and ideas.
That's where I'm going next.
You asked me to remind you.
Okay, so we did Dan, we did Jane, and Katie.
I don't really have anything to say. I have no horse in this race. Um, I don't think we saw anything from the community, from anybody who was willing to actually write in about it. To say one way or the other, you know, people had very disparate thoughts about what to do with this. Um, I understand if other members are hearing stuff from people in the community, I would encourage them to encourage those people to go ahead and write to the board so we can all see those things. Um, but, you know, like I said, I really, from my perspective as a parent, I don't, it doesn't make a difference to me. I'm good with the way it is. Thanks.
Katie, we did have emails come in uh concerning this.
Yes, I know. I acknowledged that we have emails coming in. I said that I know we had some, and that they were disparate, in my opinion. But I do think like we definitely need to hear from more people in the community. I'm not sure how we can kind of do a better job getting people to like reach out. Maybe it's, I don't know, we it's not like we name names when people write in to us. It's always anonymous, right? So maybe that's something we need to publicize better. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think from my recollection, we we the emails basically focused on the start date, not about the breaks. So we did have some. Opinions on that, but not the breaks.
Well, generally, what why it gets arranged the way it does is because of past feedback. So like the, I don't know, you were there when years ago, is people wanted that November twenty-sixth cuz they wanted a travel day for for Thanksgiving. So that was, that was why they did it at the time. So yeah, you know, it just depends on, but that's why they're in there like that, usually, it's because somebody asked.
Rainey, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I uh I agree with Brian on the twenty-sixth, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Going back to having that be a half day as opposed to a day off. I'm just, I I find it interesting that we're. We're building the calendar around when the parents wanna go on vacation as opposed to. Prioritizing the student's education. And that that really should be the priority versus, I mean, you got all summer off, you got a few breaks. You know, I I just, we're we're like, oh, well, you know, we're concerned about, you know, attendance on a particular day. It's like, well, if if you choose to keep your kid out of school, then. That's your decision that you're making around your child's education versus all the other kids. Like, I I I don't know, I just, I don't love that as our, you know, leaping off point for deciding when. Days off will be. Um. I'm not a huge fan of all of these extra half days. I think we've talked about that a little bit or a lot, um that parents have. Talked about it. I think Brian spoke about it well, about the the ups and downs. There's just really never a kind of solid. Okay, we're going for three weeks or whatever. There's always something, so I'm good with the start date. Um, I'm just not. I I don't know, I feel like we're doing the kids a disservice with all these half days. If if. If a half day is the same as a full day, then the whole calendar would be half days. And we lose a lot of educational time. For the kids. Um, so I understand there's contractual things and stuff, and maybe that's what needs to be looked at or whatever. I don't really know, but. I I don't know, I just feel like it would be nice to see a string of. Even really, we, I don't even think there's barely two weeks in a row, but there's not something. And that does feel like a hard thing for parents who work and. For the kids too, just to have some consistency. We're going to school. This is, this is our job here. So that's just my feedback.
Great, thank you.
Um, one thing that the state of Connecticut um. Kind of over the last years has gotten more and more strict on certain things. They don't do anything with enforcement. Actually, it's interesting. In the distant past, they were much more involved with enforcement and things like truance and so on, like. A family that reaches a certain point and get a probation officer, or somebody might go to court. Now that doesn't happen, it's all in schools. But if they have four absences in a month and ten in a year, they're considered chronically absent, and then it dings our accountability scores. So we're gonna have a hundred and eighty days in school, but it does make some sense to try to match it to what the ingredients are wanting, because if we don't. They'll, they may do what they need to do anyway, and then we get higher, um we get higher um school um. Through in Sarah, what is it, you know, chronic absence rates, and then that works against us. And then our scores go, you know, down because of that. So it's something, it's one of those things that you just try to balance everybody's needs as best you can, but you're going to get the hundred and eighty days cuz that's the requirement.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. So I guess then, just to clarify, I mean, we're not building this calendar based on when. People are, we think people wanna take vacations, or we're not really building, this calendar is, it's the East Conca- it starts from the East Con calendar, which is a similar calendar for. Many districts, right, that are following, I would assume, the same kinds of holidays and type breaks, et cetera.
Supposed to all of that, um which is where where the, why some things fall where they do.
Right.
Um, and then the rest of it is really just based on what people have given for feedback over the years. So and that does change over time. Some years, people want something, some years, people want don't. And then it comes back around. It really does swing like a pendulum, you know, what people want or don't. But that part, yes, we we. You, you know, we should be basing it on our region calendar, which is these kinds for those breaks. And that was one of the emails somebody sent in saying, please make sure you follow the, you know, whatever these kind of.
So um I will say that I was actually in favor of having the start date be the three-day week before. Given how many emails we received on it, and it sounded like, you know, teacher friends, I have, not necessarily district, but. They were for that too, but now that that's not an option, I don't think it really makes sense to start on that Friday. So. I'm back to this being the start date. Um, when it comes to PD days. Given that we are not increasing from last year's at all, I would not wanna um decrease that. I think we hear. Plenty from our staff saying that they utilize those days, they actually want more. Um, it's something that even comes up, you know. Negotiations and like I've mentioned before, the CEA survey, like, you know, that shows sixty-nine percent of. Teachers dissatisfied, and one of the top reasons was not enough professional development time. So I certainly won't, wouldn't wanna take away from what we already have. Um, when it comes to the breaks, I I am someone who appreciates the breaks, um so I'm I'm personally good with them. Um, but however, I do completely understand um Brian's comments on it. So I think, you know, it's one of those things where. We could come at it from a lot of different angles, so we're going to have different opinions on them respectfully. Um. And. Um, trying to think, you know, I do think. I I personally, you know, I do not agree with the, that we lose so much educational time on half days. Again, with. When you take out recess and your condensed lunch times, it's really not all that much. Um, and so I am also all for, you know, having a. Half day or having a day off on a day that, you know, a lot of kids aren't gonna come to school. Um, a- again, I just, for a couple, to juggle that for a couple of days in June. Is it, it's not a priority for me. Um, I think that's. That's all I had. Billy, so you have another question?
Yeah, um, and it might be already answered, but. A professional development day, you couldn't move. That half day that the teachers have professional development onto like, say, one of the spring break days.
You mean in the beginning of the year?
No, like uh April thirteenth. You couldn't move April twenty-ninth at a professional development day onto April thirteenth. Kids would be out.
Right, and the teachers don't work on the the non-stud- that would become. They have um contractually a hundred and eighty, or it is a hundred and eighty school days. I mean, you can do whatever you want with April break, but usually. April break is um, you know, that's not one of their hundred and eighty quarter days.
Gotcha.
Uh, I I will add to that. I do think that Brian's question of um. Could we condense some half days into full days? I do think that's valid, and I would be happy to. I won't be, I I may may not be the negotiations chair when we come up to teachers again, but I certainly think that it's a valid thing to discuss. Um, if they're getting the same amount of professional development time, but if we're doing it in a condensed manner, I think that that is absolutely a fair discussion.
Yeah, because the the other reason why I say that, I it's, I, well, Rainey is like. There was times to where there was a, I don't know, there was another professional development day. I don't know when it was. It was, it was earlier in the year. It could have been a few weeks ago or minor, they have all the time blends, but it was like, I went by Birch Grove to go pick up my son. Like, a a lot of the 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 people were just were to uh gone before, like the, they're the when the school was, the regular time of the school was getting out. He was in FRC, so it's like, I don't know how much time they're actually spending. Um, you know, two hours, an hour and forty-five minutes or something in the professional development. I think you can condense a whole bunch of these. In into a full day off. Uh, just from from experience of seeing the amount of time and who's in the parking lots and stuff, they're they're they're, I don't, you know, not like they're staying extended. Periods of time until five P M doing the professional development.
Dr. Will, is that something that you could know?
Usually PD days are eight. If you're doing a full uh in-service day, it's eight to three, cuz all teachers have different begin and end times. So on those days that they're there for a whole day, that's, you know, in-service, it's standardized to eight to three, cuz sometimes you meet them all. At, you know, one span of time, otherwise. Uh, you'd have, you know, people unavailable at certain times if you're trying to get everybody in the same training.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? I have a question. Yeah, um, Dr. Wood, so when we moved early release days or PD days. To Wednesday, what day did they used to be on?
Well, they've gone back and forth over the years, but Wednesday's been the one that seemed to keep.
The Friday it was on.
Once there, they're on Fridays, but we found his people.
And so why did we move them from Fridays to Wednesdays?
I think there was a general feeling that the enrollment went down significantly on the Fridays, but.
So there was attendance issue?
Yeah, again, it contributed negatively to chronic absenteeism and things like that.
So it would be something that we should consider, because when we had. We had early release days, AKA professional development days on Fridays, and we've had consistent. Attendance issues in the past historically. So we moved them to Wednesdays to try not to have the parents have a long weekend. It would be something legitimately that we need to discuss as a board, that if we had. The whole summer off and then a Friday as a start date, and then not start on a Tuesday, that having that Friday. Might be an attendance concern, would be something that us as a board should consider.
Yeah, I mean, you're saying that, you know, that if you even start school on the Friday, what you're saying is the people.
Right, so based on trend, it's not about us acquiescing to people's requests of having a long vacation or people's vacation time. It's traditional, it's been fact that we've lost attendance. We've had attendance issues when we had early release on Fridays. So that's why we moved it to Wednesdays. So the fact that talking about that Friday start date or talk about other things the one day would be something that we need to consider. For educational purposes, because families have decided to do so, not because we're deciding around people's vacation time. Um, and then, not to put you on the spot, but because Dana brought it up, I certainly don't wanna leave you out, what our representatives like to weigh in. I didn't mean to jump in, sorry.
Um, yeah, sure. So I. I do love the little three-day long weekend move on. Obviously, that can't happen this year. If it can happen in future years, that's what I personally prefer. I love a little, you know, you sink in, you let it, you digest it, you say, oh, I'm back at school, and then you just go and punching. Um, so I think the start in the first date is fine. Um. I think that the professional in-service days, I feel like at this point, there's honestly not a lot. Whether you're happy about it or not happy about it, that we can do about it, based on contracts, the number of professional days that they need. So I feel like. You know, we ta- it's the majority of the conversation every time we have these calendars meeting, calendar meetings. I feel like right now, when it's in action, it's kind of. Beating the dead horse a little bit. You know, I go home and I dream about it, ever present, but. You know, I like this schedule. I like the out date, June sixteenth, that's pretty nice. That's our graduation date this year. I think that's good. Um. I personally don't mind having kind of sporadic days where we're out or only in a half day. Because I know that for me and for a lot of people that I know. Burnout, especially in like the Januaries and the Mayes, it's a really, really big problem. Um, and you know, like for me this year, I work every day. I work Monday through Friday, so I'm leaving my house at six forty. I don't get home until five thirty. So like, my day is like long, and when I don't have like little half days or, you know, a break or two. It can feel very, you know, the roof is weighing again. So I, it's not an issue this year, but I'm nervous if it moves in a trend where we only have. Two longer breaks or three longer breaks every year. I'm nervous about the level of burnout. That we might see near the end of the year, but that's not an issue this year. That's just an observation for future years if something like that happens.
I completely agree. Sometimes it feels like you're having a catch-up game, and having that half day is just so nice because you can catch up on work, maybe. Get early, head on work, and especially during like final season when you're trying to balance. Teachers getting in everything for you to learn and then also studying for that final. So, yeah, January, that season is always very, very busy, and I agree. I feel like the start date is pretty unanimous. Um. It seems very reasonable. The whole calendar seems very reasonable to me. I feel like I don't really have any comments.
Thank you very much. I didn't, I think any of us really considered the burnout piece, which. Thank you very much, I didn't, I think many of us really considered the burnout piece, which is definitely something I've heard the most, and didn't even think to bring up in this discussion, so thank you very much for bringing up those points. Okay, board, so this is where someone puts a motion on the table, because it is already in board action.
I'd like to make a motion.
He's written a proposed one, but I think.
Something like you were saying, and you can make the motion and, or take away whatever you want.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Talon Public School twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calendar presented in the February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five meeting with the following thing, modifications. Change the, in November twenty six. Yeah, you know, I understand, I'm going, yeah, change of the November twenty sixth day from a full day to a half day. Full day off to half day. Yeah, to, to, to be in school for a half day. Change the February seventeenth, twenty twenty six becomes a professional development day. February eighteenth, twenty twenty six as a school day, and January second, twenty twenty six as a school day.
Okay. Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All right, let's go, Brian, would you like to start with you? Bill?
Nay.
Dana? Uh, we'll have Rainey at the top.
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
And Jaden?
Nay.
And Katie? I am a nay. That motion fails. Would anyone else like to propose a motion?
Motion to accept the Talon Public School twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six calendar as presented in today's twenty Jesus, February twenty twenty six meeting.
Seconds?
Second.
Um, any discussion? Okay, uh, Brian, I'll start with you again.
Nay.
Bill?
Nay.
Dana?
Aye.
Um, there's no, Jaden?
Aye.
Rainey?
Nay.
Dan?
Nay.
Katie?
Aye.
I'm an aye. That is a tie vote, so that doesn't pass.
I'm gonna give it a shot.
Okay.
Motion to accept the Talon Public School twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calendar presented in the February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five meeting with the following modifications. Change November twenty sixth from a full day off to a half day. February seventeenth becomes a professional day, February eighteen, twenty twenty six as a school day.
Second.
Okay, so January second is off the table.
Yes, I didn't have that in the motion.
One day, and.
So it stays off.
Basically, you took this first three hours.
All right, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we have a second, any discussion? All right, Brian?
Come back to me, thinking.
So it's the first three things, not the January second.
Let me highlight, he, he did it with the.
Thank you.
I think, right?
Yes.
Okay, Bill?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Um, Dan?
Aye.
Jaden?
Nay.
Rainey?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
I am a nay, that vote, that passes. Okay, so, looks like next we're back up to public participation. The comments are limited to two minutes. Dr. Will, you have the timer ready? Do we have any online comments at this time, please raise your hand? Once? Twice? Three times? Okay, we'll close that, uh, Dr. Will, points of information? Okay, any members on the board, points of information?
I'd say good thing, please, for their continuous contribution, I really appreciate your perspective.
Somebody else? Okay, future business, uh, looks like Dr. Will, did you just want to?
Multi-tier assistance to support instructional rounds.
I'm going.
Please come, it'll be great.
You going Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Brian? Bill?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Jaden?
Did it pick me up? I, I'm sorry.
And Dan?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at eight oh eight, thank you.